On that note, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the first meeting of the month of October for the Auburn City Council. And Chief Shannon, do we have anybody?
Nobody on.
Nobody on, okay. So officially call this meeting to order. I'll recognize that a couple phone calls this afternoon. Paul and Scott are not going to be here today, but we're doing it forward, so we'll move on from there. Also want to thank the public, variety of individuals, council members, staff, for passing on sympathies on the loss of my mother. That happened in the last week. I appreciate the kind words and the sentiment there. I was just impressed. So appreciate that. Next item on the agenda is agenda addition or agenda approval. Here, I would recommend L1, which is Lynn County Planning and zoning update on King Chapel to be moved into right after the consent agenda. We've got three speakers from our campus that are here to speak to that. So we're going to move L1 to after consent agendas. Any other agenda?
I would possibly move J2.
I asked about J2.
Weekend, if you want to.
We'll move J2 as well. If that's okay. If that's everybody, okay. We'll move J2 to after L1. Because we've got three individuals here.
Right to E then, right?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
We've got three individuals here that are here for that part of the agenda as well. So if those two changes in the agenda, there's a motion to approve the agenda. As a matter of fact, Craig, is there a second?
Second.
Craig and Mark moved and seconded. Moved and seconded to approve the agenda with those two changes. All of their motions, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Communications, this is part of the meeting, is if there's anybody here from the public that is here to address any particular topic that's not already on the agenda. If you're here to speak to some topic that's specific on the agenda, just wait until an item comes up. But if there's anybody here to come up, speak, or any open items, now is the time to just come up to the microphone and you have five minutes to speak. Name and address and make sure it's on. Yeah, thank you for that.
Does this seem to be on?
It doesn't need to be. There's nobody on.
Oh.
Okay, okay. So my name is Sue Ashley. I am, I live at 735th Avenue Northwest, and I'm here as chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. I didn't know if I qualified to add some items to your, an item to your agenda. We would like to have council endorsement of the selection of TMJ as our design guidelines firm. And if that's something you could add to your agenda tonight, that would allow us to get a contract signed with them so that we can proceed.
What did you ask me? Can we have this discussion?
There wasn't a vote.
Two meetings ago.
Or two meetings ago.
It was two meetings ago, and there was not any kind of vote.
That was to be the next step.
So yeah, let's study this opinion about this.
I can't add it to tonight's agenda. We can, you can give them the green light. The account and the money's already been allocated really technically. If you want to form a vote, they can vote on it, but you don't necessarily need it.
So we get to have this contract signed before, if not, perfect. That would be perfect with us. We just didn't want to delay.
The segment was approved, yeah, and agreed, and I think Councilman Paul is representing us.
Yes, he's been great. Well, thank you. Thank you. That works for us.
Yeah, I think we all agreed on that. So only the open comments section, we, it's not a back and forth, but for this one, we're moving forward and we're going to move that. Anybody else here to speak to the comment section? Now, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We've got one item, that's the approval of the city council minutes from September 16th. Is, does anybody have any questions or can we move forward?
Not all move to approve the consent agenda.
Move that seconded. I've moved, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Stephanie Mark. Move and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. No comments. All of their motions, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion carries. Let's do, I've got L1, Lynn County Planning and zoning update on King Chapel. Lynn County and, well, as Cornell.
Good evening. Luke Maloney, Lynn County, meeting official.
Thank you, Luke.
As requested, I'm here to update council on the, to give a brief update on the current condition and temporary measures taken to monitor and stabilize King's Chapel. Representatives from Cornell are also here and are welcome to assist in the conversation as warranted. As many of you know, King's Chapel has been found to have significant structural issues, including partial failures of the roof, the roof structural systems, which are contributing to additional loading being placed on the exterior walls. There is significant sagging in various areas of the roof, and exterior walls have been pushed out of plane. There has been a previously temporary structural brace installed, I believe, on the west transit.
Southwest.
Southwest. On March 6th, my office, once we became aware of the, more of the details on the structural deficiencies, we did issue a formal notice of violation, which consisted of order for monitoring to be performed by a licensed structural engineer to ensure the structural stability was maintained until permanent repairs could be made. And the results have been reported to my department. Cornell has complied with that notice. It's, it's been very interesting to, to see the level of monitoring that's been put in place for that building. So we really appreciate that cooperation. There are currently automatic static displacement monitoring system installed on the building. There's 36 of them at, I believe, at 36 points, 12 per elevation, and they're measured at one week or less intervals. The reports are then submitted to Cornell as well as Lynn County Building Division. In addition, there's baseline surveys and follow-up performed by Shiva Pateri to reconfirm the measurements. So the building is under continuous watch, which is great. We've seen no significant movement to date, so that's good news. It's staying in the same condition. Any questions on that part of it? I'm trying to be brief, and the heavy agenda is. I did have a follow-up conversation with Cornell staff last week, and in that conversation, my take was that they agreed to have Walter P. Moore set up an alert system to notify both the engineer and Cornell, and establish a tolerance level for how much movement's okay. And then draft an emergency action plan to install additional temporary bracing. All this with a drop dead, goal lined goal, because this is a very substantial project, to have boots on the ground commencing full permanent repairs by April 1st. So that's kind of where it stands. If I, if anybody from Cornell would like to speak on that, or if there's any questions. But we've kind of worked through all this, and I think everybody's doing their due diligence to maintain the integrity of that building, so.
Luke, real quick, the letter that we have our packet, that'll go with, you see the letter that Cornell has? There were three possible next steps, and it sounds like in conversations with Cornell, you're going to do two of those. Increase monitoring, continue and increase monitoring, and add additional bracing?
The additional bracing would be an emergency measure if there was some sort of sign that was alerted from the engineer, to the engineers and the college entities. That would be implemented after the fact. So 36 monitoring devices will remain the same. There's not going to be an increase that, for that. And then in April of 2025, construction will begin.
Yeah, so there are two out of the three items, but it's essentially, so when April, the, the permanent fix is the roof replacement and then the structural improvements that Cornell would make, start to make on April 1st. What, what Walter P. Moore came back and said is, there's not significant movement that is being implicated right now. So they can continue to monitor with the existing equipment. Cornell is going to put an emergency action plan together for what amounts to between now and that April 1 timeframe when they start in case there is significant movement. But there's no need to spend dollars on additional bracing. If it's not going to be needed, obviously after the party, it starts, so.
I just wanted to clarify, I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
It's good news, April 2025?
Well, I would just.
Go ahead, Dylan. Introduction, introduction.
Yep, I'm Kelly Fleggian, Vice President for Business and Enterprise Services at Cornell. The other thing I would just mention is within this letter from Walter P. Moore and the suggestion for the full roof replacement with temporary repair under their recommendations, that is our, that is the scope change that we are fully evaluating now and anticipate. That's the direction that we will be moving forward in the spring, once we get through the winter weather. Now's not the time to take a roof off and put on a temporary roof, given the time of year that we are. So just thinking about the letter of recommendations, that would be the second one. And at this point, we are intending to pursue it, just that, that work won't actually begin. Those are the work that begins in the spring. Thank you.
Kind of questions? Scott, do anything ahead? Anything else?
No, just the timelines. I think there's a, our team talked about having CDs, construction documents within the next two months, which will allow time for Lynn County to, you know, sign off on or kind of do questions with. Then we would, a chunk of time would be going out to bid contracts, things of that nature. So there's a bit of a process yet that has to be followed, no matter which direction it goes. And this time period which you've provided or suggested would work with that.
If, if I may, the temporary measures that have been put in place have assisted in the building, there's fencing around the building. It's not, nobody can get close enough to the building. If there was a partial failure, it wouldn't be a full-blown fall over situation, more than likely. The likelihood would be just a partial part of the roof, but again, we've made it through spring storm season, summer storm season. It's, it's holding up, so I mean, I'd say we're sitting in an okay position to just move forward with that timeline of April.
Anything else? Compliments to the party's concern for working collaboratively on this. I mean, it's not unresolved by any stretch, but King Chapel is obviously very important to the college. It's obviously important to Mount Vernon, because it's in our skyline. It is our centerpiece, a centerpiece on campus. It's a high point for our community, so good luck in that process and issue success.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your reports. Moving on to the second item, then we move ahead, and that was item J2, is a motion for approval. It's called Discussion and Consideration of Appointing Nick Iker to the Police Department's Council Action as Needed. Do you want to do the introduction? Chief Shannon?
Sure. We've completed through the application process and interviews. Had several young individuals that had applied and interviewed four of them. Nick kind of rose to the top on that, so we're looking forward to offering Nick Iker a position with the police department and begin his training program. Hopefully slating to get him into the academy in January. Until we can get the hiring approved, then I can apply to get a seat saved in the academy. So hopefully soon we'll have that. But Nick Iker, Christina's mom is in the back, and some may know her from the city of Lisbon and stuff like that. Good local connection, and he's pretty excited to join our department and get rolling, I think.
Sounds good. A motion for approval, or do the, for?
I would do the motion first, so it gets approved.
Is there a motion to that effect?
I would move to approve Nick Iker as a new appointment to the Mount Vernon Lisbon Police Department.
Craig, is there a second?
I'll second.
Move the second to Craig and Stephanie. Welcome Steve, Nick Iker to. The party should recognize a vote on this. All of their motions, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Name, sign. Motion carries. When you come up here, and I will read the statement.
You can give him a second, if you want to see it. That way he doesn't get lost either.
Nurse can get in there. Raise your hand. Yeah, raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Michael Siker.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability.
And I will faithfully and partially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the office of police officer.
To discharge all the duties of the office of.
Police officer. In the cities of Mount Vernon and Lisbon.
In the cities of Mount Vernon and Lisbon.
As now and hereafter required by law.
As now and hereafter required by law.
Congratulations, and this will be witnessed the 7th day of October 2024, in the city of Mount Vernon, and with my signature and stamp. So thank you, and welcome. Good luck. I'll get back to the, where we're at in the agenda, and that is public hearings. First one is. Public hearing, the plan specifications, formal contract, and estimate the cost of the industrial center generator project. We're back again. First of all, open the public meeting. And if there's anybody here that's here to speak to that project, now's the time to come forward. You want to talk about the generator project? Twenty-one, twenty-two, is anybody else here to speak to the public hearing about the generator project with LBC? Not officially closed public hearing. Do you need a vote on that? No, okay. Public hearing is closed on that process. Move to G1, which is the action step, the resolution. 10-7-2024A, happy plan specifications, formal contract, and estimate the cost of the industrial center generator project. Tell us from staff.
No. This project, like you said, is one that we scrapped about a month ago. We've had some further conversations with Alliant Energy and made a few minor changes, so hoping that we'll have one more there.
Is there a motion to move forward on this one?
I'll move forward on resolution 10-7-2024A, document plan specification, formal contract, and estimate the cost for the industrial center generator.
Mark, is there a second?
Second.
Move and seconded to approve, resolution 10-7-2024A. I hope you can add a vote, or a re-marcha.
West, yes. Angle?
Yes.
Andrewson?
Yes. That resolution passes. Going back to E2. Again, let's open the public hearing. On the ordinance submitted, chapter 165 zoning regulations are 302, definitions article, limited industrial, limited industrial district of the Mount Vernon Code of Ordinances. Officially open that public hearing. Anyone here to speak to that? The representatives are interested in that, but I think we've received communication, communication and public communication in the past about that. Anybody here last call for that public hearing? I will close public hearing. At E2, move to F3, which is the action item that the company is at. F3 is the ordinance 10-7-2024A, limiting chapter 165 zoning regulation, article 302, definitions article 413, L1, limited industrial district of Mount Vernon Code of Ordinances. This is to approve the first reading, and I proceed to the second reading of next meeting. Any questions or discussion about that?
So this goes in reference to a situation in which the council adopted a moratorium against additional smoke shops. We had two open within basically a month of one another. Well, this coalition of Earl Lynn County wrote a letter of support and detailed some of the issues, obviously, that are associated with these. But this ordinance will amend the zoning code and essentially make the approved districts the limited industrial instead of the commercial areas of the community. It also sets a 1,000-foot buffer on any school or area where children could be present. This is pretty normal. Cities have had buffers in place for bars, as it relates to churches and schools, things like that, in place basically since zoning was a thing. But this is a, it's not an outright ban, but it does make it more challenging for these types of businesses to locate in prominent areas of the community. Planning and zoning voted in favor of this. There are representatives from the coalition that are here if you have any questions. But I know that we've spoken about this quite a bit in like both with the moratorium and then as we made our way through the new ordinance.
Is 1,000 foot kind of the normal range? I am not sure if I saw it correct. I didn't go through it. I think Iowa City is going through something similar. It would be a 500-foot. 500-foot range, yeah.
So it depends on the, honestly, it depends on the community. A thousand foot is more normal than the 500 feet is. Iowa City has more of what I would consider like neighborhood commercial areas where 500 feet sets quite a swath out of, out of their community. A thousand feet would be more appropriate here. Most of our limited industrial is on the outskirts of the community as well, but just want to ensure that on your park or church or some other gathering place. But 1,000 feet is more normal as, as far as my 20-plus years of experience with 500 feet is.
And I'm just, I guess I'm looking also into the future of, you know, we don't know quite what's going to be going on on the new 30, of course, in that area, of hopefully getting a business in there sooner than later. You know, having that coincide with potential other businesses, coinciding with potential housing coming up, you know, around that area too. Just not quite sure if I'm ready for that yet. I mean, this is the first reading, so I'd like a little bit more research at first on my end, at least to go through some of these things. I've got multiple questions, as you'll see.
So will the council move forward on the first reading? Doesn't force right now.
I would move to approve ordinance 10-7-2024A, limiting chapter 165 zoning regulation.
I'll second.
Move and seconded, Craig and Stephanie, and move forward on ordinance 10-7-2024A, first reading. And that, if there's a vote on that, is a marcha.
Andrewson?
I'm going to say no.
West, yes. Angle?
Yes. First reading passes. Two to one.
Usually the first reading goes.
Ah, sorry. Please.
Sorry, I apologize. I was going to interject before you took a vote. In order for this to get past the first reading, to go to the second reading, it needs a majority of, like, full council nod, a majority of the present. So if.
So this will roll over the next day?
Uh, no. It'd have to come up for reconsideration, and it would have to do another public hearing, and so on and so forth. So it'd probably be a couple months.
When does the moratorium run out?
It was like six months, was it?
I think.
It was six months, a year.
I think it, was it April?
I think it was April.
I think it may have ran out in September.
You can.
Can we extend the moratorium?
You can. The moratorium wouldn't be voted on until the 7th, so you might risk that you run, or the 21st, because if somebody walks through the door tomorrow, between now and the 21st.
I'd like to have that option considered.
I, I guess I want to talk through a couple things here. So then we get, as we get further down, I'm seeing that. One of. One of the amendments would be to have like an attendant at the door of any of these places also. Which I, I just, I, I think that we should be able to trust our, our shop owners as opposed to making, that's sure that someone's at the entrance of a business. When, I also believe that the state has done quite a bit to curb a lot of these businesses. And by January 1st, I think a lot of these businesses are going to be gone because of the banking laws that are changing. The laws that did change already July 1st. So a lot has changed since April, or if you remember, moratorium started. So I'm just not there with these yet at all.
I will say, Mark, my understanding is that the intent is to prevent anyone from, under 21 from even entering. And if someone wasn't at the door, that would be possible, or it would be much harder. And so that, that's why it's ordered as such. See section one of the amendment?
So I guess if you look at it this way, the ordinances have been created similar to kind of the bar versus restaurant and bar. A bar is required, obviously, to ID, a bar in Iowa City, like, is required to ID anybody that is entering their facility is 21. They don't sell food. They're there for the consumption of alcohol. So they will ID typically at the door. Anybody under the age of 21 normally has to be those establishments unless they're their company's parent. A bar slash restaurant, anybody under the age of 21 can be there. And so they, they look at those businesses differently. So if you look at this, Casey's or Quick Star, any of those facilities don't have to have an attendant. This makes up a very small percentage, well, sales make a very small percentage of what it is they, they sell as far as footprint. But smoke shops in general, whether it be cannabis or whatever they are selling, is the entire store, the entire shop. So that's the differentiation between the two. I would agree with you, Mark, that you think there's some, some laws that are being introduced at the state level that will potentially change the dynamic of, of these locations, but I think at this point, because you've already taken a formal vote, unless there's a vote to reconsider. And Mark, if you're busy, I don't like to make that motion, as the longest, I think then this would just move on to another meeting, but we'd have to go through, like I said, we'd have to go through the public hearing process. There is no law that says you can't bring in similar ordinance background for reconsideration, given the fact that you're down two council members tonight.
I, I also just, I'm trying to, you know, see how. I also just, I'm trying to, you know, see how, you know, you can take your child into, you know, you know, a liquor store, to my knowledge. I just think it's being treated differently when, yeah, they're different, but not really. I'm trying to comprehend if...
I think the enforcement side of this would be, with the standalone vape shops like we have uptown, they are very small, they don't offer any other services other than those type of products. So there's no food, there's no beverages or anything like that, there's nowhere to sit, you're coming in to partake, to purchase certain items, specific items for sale in that aspect from that standpoint. Both of those are of size where the person who's running the register is going to, you walk in, it's one room, they're going to know you're there for the most part, and so they could function in both of those aspects. Still running their business, it shouldn't be a big burden for them to manage that, but it's also just, you know, we are, 25% of our community is young, and if you walk down through, it'd be important for them to take responsibility for that. For the enforcement piece of that, it'll be, we do compliance checks every year, and that's where the enforcement side of that will come from, making sure that they're IDing, making sure they're following through, just like we do in every other tobacco retailer already, as we go through from there. So I don't think, you know, we're going to, I don't think they have to hire another person to sit at the door. That same person can run both of those tasks.
Thanks for those comments.
I have F3 as a first reading, first motion, approve the first reading is not passed at this point. Will the group? Assuming that, yeah, assuming that it is, E3, appearing on ordinance amending chapter 46, minors and mothering code ordinances, I'll officially open the public hearing to see if there's anyone here to speak to that item. Seeing no one this here speak to E3, I will oppose that public hearing, and we're to proceed to F4, which is ordinance 10-7-2024B, amending chapter 46, minors of the mothering code ordinances. This is before its approval for the first reading. Are there any questions, staff? We've got representatives from the coalition here as well. What is the total group here?
Well, I'm, for the same reasons, I'm going to probably say no on this, but yeah, I've got to say no on this.
Does this change anything? It's amended, it's just, it's saying for smoke shops, the legal age is 21?
To be in the business. My suggestion would be, you can table this without a three, nothing vote if you want to have this in front of the entire council. You can motion to table, or you can get a motion to approve and go through the actual formal vote.
I'd like to make motions to table.
Table, okay. Move seconded by Stephanie and Craig to table. I have F4, and probably coupled with the other, I have one just left. Doesn't make sense. We need to vote on that table, I have this F4 at this time, and if we can have a vote and, and that needs to be a roll call vote, or does not? That's not a roll call vote?
Not.
Okay, the motion is to approve the table, I have F4. All in favor of the motion to table, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have this table, and soon will come up at appropriate time, if there's a F4. Going back to E4, public hearing on ordinance, amending the code ordinances of the city of Melbourne, by many provisions pertaining to chapter 165 zoning regulations. I'll officially open that public hearing, see if there's anyone here to speak to that item at this point. And seeing no one here that wants to address that item on the public hearing, I will close the public hearing and conclude E4, and now we'll proceed to F5, ordinance 10-7-2024C, the code ordinances of the city of Melbourne, by many provisions pertaining to chapter 165 zoning regulations. Some floors, a motion to approve the first reading, proceed to the second, will this the lower group?
So for those in the audience, this is, this would be the ordinance that would allow ADUs accessory to owning units to be allowed within the city limits, part of the housing commission study for alternatives to more affordable housing options. This too, if you really look through these requirements as to what will be allowed or not allowed, will be limited as far as their locations. But planning, planning and zoning commission did do, as council asked, they created an ordinance, this is what they're recommending. Again, if there's questions and you want to pull this conversation in front of the entire city council, you can make a motion to table this at the next meeting, or if you feel comfortable that three of you are in favor of this, you can be part of it tonight.
Well, I certainly would be in favor of it.
I think, I think everybody could put in a lot of work to this. Yeah, I thought it, it looks good.
And housing planning and zoning haven't given a lot of thought, and it's been in the works for quite a while, so. Let's recognize what they have done to this point here. I would move to approve ordinance 10-7-2024C, amending the code of ordinances of the city of Melbourne.
And I'll second, in keeping with our comprehensive plan.
Exactly. Moving to second to approve the first reading on 10-7-2024C, and if you're ready to vote on that one, please.
Engel.
Yes.
West, yes. Anderson.
Yes.
Motion carried. F1? Yes, ordinance 93-2024A, sober urban renewal area, wish to approve the third final reading in that process. Anything, I think staff's already told us that there's no further comments or issues on that, nothing to change readings one and two?
Given that, I move to approve ordinance 9-3-2024A.
Thank you, Stephanie, is there a second?
Second.
Move seconded by Stephanie and Mark to approve, we're about to move on to the third final reading of 93-2024A. That is a roll call vote, and Marsha, it is yours.
West, yes. Engel.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Same process basically for springbook medals, third reading, final reading, on 93-2024B. Again, no comments to staff? I would move to approve ordinance 9-3-2024B.
I'll second.
Second. Yes, move a second to approve the third final reading on 93-2024B. If there are no other comments or questions, all in favor of that motion, please answer the roll call vote.
Anderson.
Yes.
West, yes. Engel.
Yes. And that ordinance passes. If we are to, E1.
E2.
Oh, yeah, already did E1. Oh, yes, it's, oh, it's 7. This is something that was brought up by staff several months ago with regard to deferred compensation of the city of Melbourne, and for staff? Can you add to it, Chris?
Now, the agreement has been reviewed by the attorney. Again, this is a secondary retirement account that the city would not put money into. It would just be if the employees wanted to take advantage of that, but there are other communities in the state of Iowa that are doing it, and it has been brought up during our interview process, especially for police officers, who don't have this amendment, so there's an administrative fee that the city would cover, but outside of that, they match the top creation of the top of the employee.
Question squared, seems like it's very legit, this year and so on. Already made some attorney review. Are there any comments or questions about resolution, or are we going to move forward for approval?
Did you say the attorney had reviewed it?
Yes.
I'm making sure I heard it right. Okay. Given that, I think it's the right thing to do, I think we should, I'm going to make the motion to approve 10-7-2024D.
And Mark, second, yes, okay. Moving seconded to approve 10-7-2024B, and Marsha?
Engel.
Yes.
West, yes. Anderson.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion, that resolution passes. Next resolution concerns minor flat change, parcel A, minor boundary change in the city of Melbourne, 10-7-2024C. How was this even noticed?
Well, somebody put their irrigation system on the wrong side of the property line, and as opposed to fighting or removing it, they decided to do a minor boundary change and the neighbor is giving them three feet of property. I can speak to this if you have any questions. I know this is, it doesn't change, these lots are large enough that three feet doesn't need to change.
I commend the neighbors for working this out, just on your own.
Yeah, it's a much easier, having to call the city and try to get this figured out. So this is, again, this is just a minor boundary issue, there's nothing much to it.
I have no idea about Craig's comment about how that is so logical, but so rarely happens, that the neighbors talked about, came here with an agreement, not deal. I mean, I get phone calls, chief gets phone calls, I mean, people come to city hall about, tissue boxes on my side of the table here, what's the deal with that? And they think it'll be fixed and taken care of, to civilized people to be able, be able to get done like that, so I've stopped reaching. This is my wisdom solid right here. So it was a, this is a resolution, movement, motion. I would move to approve resolution 10-7-2024C, approving the plot of survey 2888 parcel A, minor boundaries change. If you agree against Stephanie. Moving seconded to the report 10-7-2024C, and that's a roll call vote as well, if you are ready to vote.
Engel.
Yes.
West, yes. Anderson.
Yes.
That resolution passes. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thanks for working on that. Resolution 10-7-2024D, preliminary approval, application for voluntary annexation of the city of Melbourne, Iowa.
Speaking of starting processes over again, it was determined after we went through this process the first time, that because Lisbon and Melbourne share a common boundary, that our urbanized areas overlap, even though we have an agreement as to where Google annexes where, and this is nowhere near it, we saw it through the city development board. So it has about six months and a lot of cost for the annexation, but we're essentially starting over and we'll go through this process.
I did ask, Chris, about who is the city development board, and that's actually a state level, I don't know.
Yeah, it's a wingman of the Iowa department of economic development, now it's the Iowa economic development authority, I think we should have named it one or two times since I started with. So it is a governor-appointed board, and they will make the final determination. Most of the rules are because none of the suburbs have been walking along very well. So loops that we're definitely through are kind of designed for them, but that's fine.
So in the, in our package on page 76, the resolution is not filled in, I assume that's no big deal. It's in our agenda, it's fine.
And are both parties aware that we're starting over?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we see any barriers after this?
So the only challenge that I see with the annexation going to the city development board is that we took a very small sliver of the logic property and created what's called a flag, the annexation, it's like six feet wide. They frown upon that, they won't let you create an island, so we couldn't jump from our city limit to here, but they don't really like these little flags either. So as far as pickups that I could foresee happening, that would be it. I think for Troy and his wife, we go down this path first, not that they're unwilling to annex more, but it definitely complicates his future plans like we do. He's aware that we could take more if we wanted to with an 80/20 scenario, so he's not, he's not becoming a barrier, it's just trying to be respectful to him, and take the least amount possible, and if the development board says yes, then we'll go with them, and if they don't, we'll start the process.
Good question, and thanks for the answer.
Thank you.
So do you want to move forward with this resolution for approval? Don't get, the next step. Resolution, I move to approve resolution 10-7-2024D, the preliminary approval application for voluntary annexation in the city of Melbourne. Craig, is there a second?
I'll second.
Craig and Stephanie here. Resolution to vote on 10-7-2024D, and for Engel, Marsha.
West, yes. Engel.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Resolution passes. Next one is 10-7-2024E, providing for new no parking zone designations within the city of Melbourne. Saw a report from Chief Shannon on, was it 7th, remember correctly? By the way, the Cornell folks left too soon. This is, this is, they're off the staff part there.
Only a few spots, and it's very important spots, because it's, I have trouble with it all the time, I guess if you want to allow me to talk about it.
Well, I was going to say, I wanted to go on record to say, even though my house was within a block of this, I did not bring this forward. But it is problematic, so individuals turning from First Street south on the 7th avenue often have one car lane in which to maneuver behind, because anybody coming from the north, there's already cars parked there.
Well, in the winter, I'm sure it's even worse.
Yeah.
It's still crowded there.
It's bad, and if you're actually stopped at the stop sign, and then that, and then that, I don't know, let's say it's a red van, could be, you know, at the very edge, there's, you're barely squishing in. So, yeah, if you're actually stopped where you're supposed to, it makes it very difficult. And, yeah, then you can get lines of cars up too.
It's actually permit parking as well, so it's just that our permits are unfortunately cheaper than Cornell's permits. If they had a Cornell permit, they could park in that nice big parking lot that's usually about half full.
This moves it to about 50 to 55 feet to the south.
I think that's all it needs too, so, yeah, I'm going to go ahead and move to the resolution 10-7-2024, providing for new, it's on designation.
Is there a second? Second. Craig and Craig, move a second to move forward with 10-7-2024E. Any further discussion? Quickly, we implement something like this as far as signage and everything, please.
Once the resolution passes, it's a matter of one call.
Okay.
With the sign and then done.
If we're ready to move on that resolution?
Anderson.
Yes.
West, yes. Engel.
Yes.
Resolution passes. Moving on to motions for approval, first item is a claims list, sent out this afternoon by Marsha. Any questions about that?
The longest claims list I have ever seen, in my tour of duty here.
I'm going to blame Marsha, it's the longest agendas I've ever done.
No, it was because there was three weeks and there was just two.
I'm sure the rest of you here will come.
Well, help me sweep in the nards in business. That's, I will move to approve.
Thank you, Stephanie, and Craig, and Mark, Stephanie and Mark. Move second to approve the claims list, and if you're ready to vote on that, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Who carries? Going down J2, J3, special consideration of Chief's work number one, Bryant Road water main extension, council action as needed.
Okay, so bear with me for a minute, because this has been so popular in itself. So originally, when we decided to send the water main down Bryant Road to connect the public works site, there's a six-inch pipe that comes from Bryant Court. Our assumption was that it was connected to another six-inch. Our assumption was that it was connected to another six inch, so we were gonna go, you can go two inches basically, you go six to eight, four to six, but you can't go from four to eight, otherwise it'll just drop pressure significantly. So what they discovered was there was a four inch line heading west on Bryant Road, actually past Bryant Court somewhat, so we couldn't go to the eight inch pipe to begin with.
That actually goes all the way to the gravel.
Yeah, it goes all the way.
Wait, wait for me to move on.
So, well, we're, the gravel started.
Oh, okay.
So then we went back and forth, so we put in another hydrant and then still run a six inch line past that. And ultimately, we decided until we know what development's going to do on the south side, if anybody ever buys that forty acres and brings, you know, what we sell, rip out to Bryant Road, the four inch was the price. So, the initial deduction in this change order went from seventy thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-five cents to forty-three thousand three hundred and twelve dollars. Now, on the backside of that change order, because of the deduction, we decided that it was much easier to have day treatment construction go ahead and make the connection all the way to the public works, through the public works site for us as opposed to staff trying to do that as well. So, that is a seventeen thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollar add. So grand total, this project was deducted nine thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-five cents from the original contract.
So what'd you say?
I was just gonna say, so you want us to approve these spending laws?
Correct.
That's just so weird.
Which like later in the agenda, you're gonna figure out.
And will it be a four inch all the way out to public works or a six inch?
They're sort of, to the end of the existing four inch, they're gonna tie on with a six. So from, from where it turned, where the asphalt road turns into the asphalt millings that they have out there, that's roughly about where the four, so from there, about halfway down, it'll be six inch. And then they turn, cross the road, go through the right away into the lot. I believe that's all eight inch. Because, because of the distance with the four inch, it's not just like step by step in a small area. I don't know all the calculations, engineers do that better than me, but we're okay to suffice the eight inch on the lot so we don't have to in turn replace that later. And then once, we might have low pressure on the lot occasionally. Say everybody on Bryant Road and Bryant Court are using water at the same time, we might see a drop in pressure a little bit. But once everything's looped back around, Stoneborough's north, then that water main is all looped. We'll have fire protection, so the other thing I was gonna add was, in that, in the schematics of what we did in the lot, we actually added a hydrant there on the north central side of the lot, which serves several purposes. Number one, it's, it will be fire protection for the buildings, which I don't think we're gonna get that pressure until the water main's looped from Stoneborough. But we can also hose down our compost, which will help. And if it's close to the building, we can water trees. It's, we've talked with Mr. Goodlove at the fire department, and he's expressed interest in possibly putting this kind of little training area out there. So they would have a hydrant to pull off of or stuff like that as well. And it's right next to the retention area, so we're not gonna get everything out, you know, in the yard, so. So yeah, so then, the public works will still tie in our service lines to our hydrants in the buildings, but they have the main trunk line for everything, and you're there with this project, so. Yeah, I think I included everything.
All right, I will move to approve change order number one of the Bryant Road water main extension.
I'll second that. Craig. Moving second to move forward, change order number one, with the issue of construction on Bryant Road water main extension. And if there are any more on that, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, special consideration of pay application one on the sanitary sewer renovation project. L. County Arco money here.
Pay out the amount of sixty-one thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty-three cents. Again, this is part of a larger seven hundred thousand dollar contract of additional cleaning and lining of older receivers. This is part of the Arco funding, so this is a reimbursement from L. County.
All right, any questions about that? Otherwise, all in favor of the motion?
Move to approve special consideration pay application number one.
Mark, is there a second?
Second.
Moving second to move forward with the sanitary sewer, the application one. Ready to vote on that, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving to twenty twenty four police vehicle equipment installation, Raycom. Information, chief, and anything to add?
No, this will be for the decommissioning of our old squad car, it's running about ninety thousand miles currently, so by the time we get, try to, we may try to get it through the winter and then have it ready to go, have a new one ready to go for the springtime, depending on what their schedules are at Raycom, when we can work in, so it's for the decommission of that vehicle and then the transfer in new equipment for the new squad car.
Any questions, chief? We're good to move forward with that. Move to approve the police vehicle equipment installation. Craig, is there a second?
Second.
Moving second to move forward with police vehicle equipment installation. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. People are ready to exit voice, eighteen thousand dollars worth of concrete.
So, all of the invoices that you see, the nineteen thousand one hundred and thirty dollars and fifty cents are for the public works site.
You see the branch?
So this is both the salt sand storage and then the north, the floor of the north building. And then we have a little bit more concrete left to do in that building and the footings for the Bryant shed. So there's actually another set of invoices. That'll be there for the next meeting and then possibly one after that. I think it's important to point out that we're spending about twenty-five thousand dollars in concrete, but if we were to have to use a contractor to do all of this work, the, the contract price would be closer to a hundred thousand.
Huge savings.
Yeah. Goodness to these guys for being able to put that under schedule.
You plan on getting that pad to Bryant pretty soon.
So the salt shed pad is poured, and that poop structure should be coming in the next couple of weeks. The, tomorrow morning, we'll be pouring the last pour in that north building, it's just twenty foot by eighty foot along the overhead doors. And then Wednesday, we'll be pouring the walls, the concrete walls for the Bryant shed. That building package from Nards is supposed to show up on Wednesday, so we can, we have to give the concrete a little time to cure, but we can start erecting that building on that right away. And we will have the floor on the inside of Bryant shed as well, four, but, so essentially, three pours left and we should be done with concrete for a little bit.
Is a week's work in concrete?
Yeah, yep.
But still great weather to do it, yeah.
Absolutely.
So, Springville ready to exit voice? We're gonna approve it?
I just have a dumb question.
Sure.
They always say that salt erodes concrete. So.
I know where you're going with this, but, so I, we have a plan.
Okay.
We're, we'll cap that pad that we have right now. We need to get the blocks put in there and the structure up, but we'll cap that pad of two inches of asphalt.
Okay.
And then we'll take a, like a mastic in line, the, the stone, the bunker blocks essentially, so salt doesn't eat at that stuff. So, yeah, it won't be curable, so that's the plan.
Makes sense, I appreciate that, thank you.
Yep.
No questions?
I will move to approve Springville ready to exit voice number seven nine one five four.
Second. Stephanie, Craig. Moving second to move forward with the payment of the Springville ready to exit voice. Good luck with the rest of the four, the rest of the three. Ready to vote on that, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Who carries? Special consideration of Waters Edge invoice, renovation project.
This is in the amount of twenty-three thousand two hundred and five dollars. This actually gets us almost completed with their contract of about a hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, because we approved a hundred and seven thousand and change at the last council meeting.
Yep.
So we're gonna come in, you said one more expected?
With the next one. Not with the, not with the design, it's more of a pool itself.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions about Waters Edge invoice, I mean, we're gonna go into the Woodruff work on the pool with our next agenda item.
As we get closer to the conclusion of our relationship with Waters Edge in this project, I move to approve Waters Edge invoice.
Craig, is there a second?
Second.
Moving second to move forward with the latest Waters Edge invoice. If there are any voters, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries as well. Discussion, discussion and consideration of pay application number one on the twenty twenty four pool renovation project with Woodruff.
So this pay application's in the amount of fifty-nine thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. The current contract price with Woodruff is one million four hundred and forty-three thousand seven hundred dollars. That subject to go up by about a hundred thousand dollars more.
Based on the email you sent us first?
Yeah, so the pool isn't grounded.
If it's floating away.
No, when I say grounded, it's, it has to do with electricity and the fact that we don't have ground rods. And that was discovered obviously with L. County inspections while they were looking to figure out how to, to do some work on the basin. So initially, so the worst case scenario is it's going to be an add of about ninety-three thousand. The reason I'm telling you all about it is because I'm gonna have to approve this change order individually, and you're gonna have to vote on it after the fact because it adds ten, ten days already to the schedule, and if I wait any longer, we'll be pushing past Memorial Day with this project. So the alternative, and I have asked Waters Edge, I sent one last kind of cry for help this afternoon to say, is there any other alternative you have been thinking about here? But they had proposed to take a three foot strip, cut that out of the remaining dam, that's already like fifty percent gone, and then put the ground rods there and then just pour back this three foot strip, and I said, no. We already have a mismatch of concrete that sits on the pool deck to begin with. Taking out three feet all the way around gives us another joint that we have to contend with evening and so on, so.
Driven kids on.
Yeah. On a right note, this is the reason I told you not to do the slide, and we're still below budget even pre being that, that change order, but that new contractor model, by the time that you get the new two change orders in the next pay application, which will likely be on your meeting on the twenty first, the, the contract price is gonna jump to about one point five million, or to one point five five million.
Thanks for the heads up.
I do appreciate your attention to the schedule. Or in our community, we will too.
Yes. My chair will be more comfortable if we get open more.
Yeah.
And yeah, we need to move forward, I think we got the large slide coming in where the little smalls.
Yeah, they've, they've had to make some minor modifications, so they've pushed the stairs that were supposed to go into the zero entry after they discussed that with the design professionals. One side we're gonna have nine inch stairs, the other side we have nothing. So nine inches is outside of what is allowed by building code anyway, so they moved those to be right across from the slide, so there'll be a stair entrance into the pool. Now there, the new deck, obviously a pool deck will make it look more conducive. If there's money additionally left over, there's a lot of wood rot, especially on the filter house and Katie's office, so we talked to Woodruff already about having your carpenters change that out. And believe it or not, there's not two, there's three colors on the main pool house as far as paint is concerned, so whether or not we do that in-house or we have Woodruff do that as well, the new, the main building goes a new color scheme. And then the final thing is bathrooms, restrooms, new fixtures. So we still have plenty of money to make all of that happen, it's just a matter of trying to work it through on our schedule.
Tough decision on the pool.
Not the last tough decision made on the pool. Yeah, I think people are gonna be very happy with that slide that we'll be going in and the changes that will be made and we'll take safety every day.
Yes. Oh, that, we'll have some additional lights too. Thanks to Lori and the fire department for having an event there, she and I just thought that it was our.
I couldn't see my child in the water.
We'll add, I think, what they estimated six.
Six hundred?
Sixty five.
That's great. Pretty cool, actually.
So, yeah, there's some, there's some add-ons that will increase safety. It will have a new feel, with the exception of the building still have new paint out, but the only other thing I would tell you is that old fountain of the front is coming off one way or the other. Other than it looks like a metal rectangle.
It's ambiance.
It doesn't work and it recycled.
It's nasty water.
Yeah, it recycled water that they would pour down, essentially drain, so you don't wanna stand there.
I'm sure it was lovely in its prime.
Yeah.
The intent.
Nice plan.
All right, I will move to approve pay application number one for the twenty twenty four pool renovation project.
Stephanie, he's there, and Mark. Moving second to approve for pay application, all in favor of the pool? If there are any more, then all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Probably you're on King or Elle, King has the reports, there's a report, I'm gonna talk about probably three things here. First of all, ask people to consider about flags in the council chambers, that's already been implemented here, and Mark and Andreessen asked about the power flag, I guess that was also good advice, so those are up. Second thing I asked people to consider was, I was asked by Jim Weldon with L. County Casino Group, if we have an opinion or no opinion or positive opinion or negative opinion about supporting the Cedar Rapids ask to get to a casino in the local study. Do we have an opinion about that or do we wanna weigh in? I've got my thoughts, but it's a council decision. Give you the amount that.
Projected, forecasted amount for yes.
So when a question like that comes up to the council for the council's opinion, we're representing the people of Mount Vernon as opposed to misrepresenting ourselves on this, and to wage an opinion without having actively discussed it with even a small sample group of twenty or twenty-five people, I think I would have to not weigh in at all until that happened. If, if they want some kind of opinion from me and the council, it would be after some due diligence, from after some due diligence.
That's fine, going back to Jim Weldon's email, I told her, I was at least gonna bring it to the council, because if they wanted an opinion like two weeks ago, then that was kinda work. Giving it a click, a click at the end of October would be fine. Appreciate the support, the eight percent give back is big for L. County, I was in Castle West for leadership Iowa. Spent time with the West Foundation there, they give twenty million back to the community, which I think means the county, so it'll be some city. Everybody voice got through, everybody got, split up this twenty million. This is, you won't be having additional information, so Jim is asking about if we, what our opinion is on Cedar Crossing.
I have a positive opinion on that, and we'll support it.
Go into it more if you'd like. Support go, go into it more if you'd like.
We can add that to eighty-four, twenty-first if they're good by getting it by the end of October.
And that's what, her answer to my question, at least get some more council members here, you know, you can talk about the community.
That will give you an opportunity to have conversations for two weeks and then give a formal, you can do a formal vote and then have a letter of recommendation signed by the mayor, shoot that poll in favor.
I was replying to her that, um, there's this gossip, we didn't have, we're short to council members, we'll still meet your date, time deadline, and, uh, hang on for two weeks, Jim Weldon.
My initial thought is that kind of the best of both worlds for us, because we've got the tax benefit, but don't have to deal with the negative, negative aspects that some people see directly in our town. But, I agree, we shouldn't wait until the full council's here.
Having been in a community that had one, and a community that tried to get one, it will be very strong opinions upon both sides of us.
I know.
That was six, seven years ago.
Yes, I remember.
Twenty-fourteen to twenty-seventeen, I think, I've referenced, so ten years ago, or ten, seven years ago.
No, not a gambler myself. I would say the economic impact, um, towards foundations, it's a bad for, of periphery communities, and be fairly sympathetic.
I have some funds from the Riverside Casino Foundation for good causes and alternatives, but we are not in their county, and there are not enough Lynn County license plates there in their parking lots to justify contributions out of that.
But there are enough to get them to raise heck about not wanting it.
Get a license on it, you know?
Yeah, right.
That's fine, I'll, I'll, um, just email her that response, and then we'll see what happens down the road. Great. Let's take care of flag and gambling. Uh, heads up to council members that, um, one thing that I've asked of council members as part of membership is some form of appraisal of Chris Snatchish. Um, I owe that to him, that is something that I think I've done every year. And I have, I will leave a city's forms that you can use, or you can do a par, you know, paragraphs or whatever. But, uh, I think we, well, the citizenry, I think we owe Chris, uh, some kind of, where we stand. That's usually at the end of the year, so I'm, I'm giving you a heads up early on here. So, I, just that, uh, we'll be talking about that potentially, and, uh, we're looking forward to getting that from you guys, and then I'll, um, take the next step of the actual appraisal.
And you're gonna use some kind of form, so I'm, and then we will augment your performance review with our own comments and feedback.
I can, I can send out some of these sample forms, electronic, maybe you can use those, or you can do long.
But it sounds like you're gonna use it, right?
Oh, I'm gonna compile five and then...
I'm a key one, yours first, don't you?
Yeah, 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 yours first, your input, and then compile mine, and then meet one-on-one with Chris.
Historic does just spend feedback, so not, uh, one to five on all of these categories, it's a bit more.
Yeah.
This is what we like, and this is what we'd like to see.
Is that what you want to be about? Uh, well, I think at the end of the year, end of the calendar year, so, uh, I'll keep it right here next week and so on, so. We've given enough heads up about that.
Just to add on that next year, I think I have to do a, a review to keep my credential manager every five weeks, I think next year.
I mean, I remember, did it before?
Yeah, I think that'll come up again next year. So, that could be in lieu of, because I have those department heads, city councils as well. Much more extensive review.
Play us to keep, is that on your basis, I think we'll, or is that?
Yes.
Part of the most important item on this whole agenda is, uh, we have a discussion and consideration of Halloween time. Thursday, October thirty-first is Halloween, and to help them last, but, uh...
It was a big deal.
Did we change it one time?
We changed it one time, thinking that we were benefiting the school, the teachers, because it was Sunday, so we moved it to Saturday. I'll never, ever decide.
In other words, we oughta keep it on Thursday, like, October thirty-first.
That's my gut feeling.
You laugh here in the front row with us.
It was probably one of the most controversial things I've done, as crazy as that is.
Well, I still gotta get ahead to time now that, you know, we've got Nathan to, with this compress, um, so we'll have Halloween on Halloween Day, on a Thursday.
Got a costume.
So, you have a costume.
I'm not gonna be here so bad.
Dictator?
Yeah, that's your, that's your, that's your word. That is the extent of my, my report. Times report, committee report, city administrator's report.
Uh, the only thing that I wanted, the two things that I wanted to add, um, number one, just to get it on the record, we've had a lot of people ask, um, water meter replacement installation, if they have a new house, or they have a new meter, why are we making them put in a new meter? For one, um, the new meters are going to consistently talk to a new radio read system, so, um, we could retrofit some of the census meters, which are a different brand than the ones that are being installed. But, um, given the contract amount, the fact that it came in a couple hundred thousand dollars under budget, we decided to replace all of the meters so we'd have one consistent system. And then, the second part of that is, the federal government's requiring the cities to conduct lead line surveys. So, part of this, um, replacement is that survey for us, so, that is the reason that we're replacing all of, all of the meters and we're attempting to get into the home. So, if you do talk to individuals, uh, yes, I understand that some of the meters are new, but not enough, not a big enough percentage was needed to kind of cart them out.
Is there any rolling number of how many lead pipe residents you're running into yet, or?
No, that report's almost getting compiled second. It's basically, we have to report that we did the survey and then report it back to the federal government. All of what we're going to be able to see at this point is internal, it'll be up to the homeowners, so they haven't required us or forced us to get that out of the system. The city is required anytime that we dig up or excavate, um, a lead line to replace that, but...
From the street to the house?
Yeah, from the homeowners, it's not. All, so the city's responsibility is from the shut-off to the street. From the shut-off to the home is the homeowners' responsibility.
I'll let you know, Tom, I put in a Saturday.
I got my second, I don't remember getting my first, but I think I got my second.
Nineteen-hundred house, I'm pressing my fingers.
They're ordering another part for me.
Yes, I did run into a few meters, uh, the standard meters is three quarters to five eights. And there are a few homes that had five eights to a half, so. The other thing that I had for you of note, and I will probably be traveling to Des Moines sometime in the next couple of weeks, is, um, the city of Des Moines pulled their Iowa League of Cities membership. That's big, obviously, because they're probably the, they are the largest contributor from a population basis, but there's some issues, obviously, that we need to, to figure out. Des Moines, Cedar Rapids, Bed North, Quad Cities, all of those communities that are of larger size have their own lobbyists. But, all of the other communities in Iowa have leaned on the League of Cities for our lobbying efforts, so the fact that we're losing revenue. Should have an interesting trickle-down. I don't know if this is a shot across the bow to the Iowa League and, um, the individual running it right now, or what?
Your instincts are probably correct.
Yes.
We've lost two lobbyists, and, uh, these are some of the repercussions.
Correct.
Des Moines is, here's a favor.
Those are the only things I really wanted to point out outside of what's our...
And then, I just wanted to, for October seventh, obviously, one-year anniversary, uh, of that conflict going on, so just wanted to recognize our Jewish American friends, uh, as it's been a very tough year on all of them. So, we're about ten thousand, uh, claims of threats and violence towards Jewish American members to the eighty of, uh, maybe all. So, just wanna mark that, um, and my thoughts of it then, you know, extending forward as well still.
Please mark, any other council, committee, or administrator report? If not, then we are adjourned, thank you very much.
Oh, really?
Yeah.